Okay, we're gonna get started. We've recessed from the closed session. We're gonna move back into closed session. We're done. I'm Governor Mike, so let's stand in their place. That should salute. But today just in the United States of America. You just heard about Spanish. The President's been brought to attention, the board. It's concerned with this issue. We've asked people to limit their comments to three minutes. This has not been effective. We were therefore asking that all comments from this point forward be turned off of the time limit. If you have more information, it will be delivered in three minutes. Please provide me behind the circle. This is Rogers, clerk of the board. You will be our timekeeper and we'll let the moderator know when comments are reaching or have exceeded the requested limit. If you have any questions during the session, you may ask to Representative or School Administrator for clarification after the meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion concerning adoption of the agenda for this evening?
No.
A motion for Mr. Grove. Is there a second? Are there seconds during discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, no? And some order. Donations.
Henwater's donated solar eclipse glasses for the students and staff at RCPS. Carol Hackley donated school supplies for students at the elementary school. Debbie Carroll donated school supplies for the students at the elementary school. And the Washington Baptist Church, the Men's Brotherhood, donated thirty-nine backpacks for school supplies for the students at RCES and RCHS. And Kent Edwards donated for the lazy students at the elementary school.
I have a question about that. Uh, there's a little, I heard a report, and I'm hoping we've already purchased the glasses for this event. Have they been purchased?
Thank you.
They have been. Okay. I heard a report that people were finding it very difficult to find. They were all sold out. But they're the NASA glasses.
That was for the last.
Every tear.
That's good. Yes. Okay, that's good. I, uh, I, Bob Ryan, who's up at the top of the hill, and I texted Bob yesterday that I learned that Henwater's had done it. He said, "This is fantastic to see." Eighty-three percent. And he was saying that he's going to Idaho to a hundred percent.
Wow.
That's Bob Ryan.
That's pretty, and a great gift. Right. And it won't happen again for, I thought it was like three hundred seventy-four, something crazy number. Well, anyway, it's an event of the lifetime. So, something that we'll all, yeah, for those students.
So you don't think they'll see it again?
At least on your end.
It's possible.
For the percentage.
For the five percent. It also goes to, like, South Carolina, if it's a hundred percent. Only what's traffic in myself is going.
If you want to sit in traffic.
Yeah.
I heard that it's gonna be just like a hurricane evacuation scenario. If you're heading to see that thing a hundred percent.
You'd better be there.
Yeah. Expect. Anyway, eighty-two percent's our bad.
All right, thanks. Is there a motion concerning the adoption of the minutes from July eleventh?
No.
A motion, Mr. Grove, or second? Second, Mr. Uwe, is there any discussion? All in favor for adopting them as presented? Say aye. Aye, please no. And so move. Verification of bills. Thank you. You holding up?
It's a fun.
You drew it back.
That's great.
We're solving, right?
The consent agenda includes approval of the donations, with letters of thanks, payment of bills, personnel report, which tonight included substitutes for cafeteria, transportation, and substitutes in general. And approval of the homeschool student report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, I think a move from, motion from Ms. Meyer, second, Mr. Uwe. All in favor? Aye. All in aye, opposed, no. Some order. Reports of superintendent. Update on the smoking laws.
Okay, yes, sir. Um, last month, the board directed us to look into submitting the V S B A, submitting to V S B A the revisions that were done by the, uh, the student group. And what the response we got from them was that they don't review any local revisions or other agency adjustments to their policy updates, because then they can't guarantee that it's better the way that they get those things for their legal purposes. However, that does not preclude the board from choosing to modify any of their policies and adopt local provisions, just won't follow their, um, policy. So, this is just a discussion point, but we have Hannah Dowd here that wanted to share a couple talking points with you about that, so I invited her to do that, if that's okay, about this and what they've done to kind of help other schools adopt, to make sure they're compliant, so.
So the changes that are presented to us are ones that we've created locally?
No, these are from the students. This is the proposal, the changes.
Wait, the first one. There's two different things here.
It's actually creating a policy.
Tobacco-free school for staff and students, G B E C. That's the first one we're talking about?
Yes, tobacco-free, yes. Okay.
If you could state your name and organization, just so everybody's clear.
Hi, my name is Hannah Dowd, and I'm a rising sophomore at Rappahannock High School. I am here today as a Y Street member. You may remember me familiar with this year when I came to discuss updating our division pol, division tobacco policy to become one hundred percent comprehensives. Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation of Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. I am here to talk about how the twenty-four-seven campaign comes in helping Virginia schools be tobacco and e-cigarette free twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I'm so excited to see the changes that were made to our policy such as step, such as extending the definition of property to include on and off-site events, whether owned, leased, or chartered by the division. Adding language to extend cessation resources to students and staff. And prohibiting the students' use, possession, and distribution in all policy documents. You have shown a strong commitment to the health and safety of our school and community, and I'm standing in front of you today to say thank you. Thank you for showing that you truly care about what youth in your Virginia, in your division have to say and what they care about. Y Street recognizes your concern for adopting this policy and moving to strengthen the standard Virginia School Board Association language within all divisions. We have partnered with divisions across the state with similar V S B A language to ensure that their policy is still in line with what is required by the state. I look forward to continue conversations and partnerships on this topic. Once you decide to adopt these policies, clearly making our school one hundred percent comprehensively tobacco-free, is a great way to show support. First, we will provide a, provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your division. Like this. Second, our free tobacco-free toolkit will be sent to all schools in your division. Third, we will add you to our official map of one hundred percent comprehensive divisions on handouts and website. Finally, you will find examples of how we can help your school division earn positive publicity for updating our policy. On behalf of Y Street, I thank you for taking the time to hear more about the twenty-four-seven campaign, and I hope that our all division will become the thirty-first with a one hundred percent comprehensive tobacco policy. Thank you.
So this is just one for conversation, because it's up to the board whether or not you want to modify V S B A policies, and in the past, it's been the practice of the board to just adopt pretty much verbatim, as V S B A says. This would require a local decision, not tonight. You don't have to make that decision tonight. I just wanted to gather the information, continue the conversation. We, if you wanted to pursue this further, we could look into how it affects code of conduct and anything like that, because we did just revise that, and to make sure it works with that and bring back a recommendation or solid one that I didn't know.
So, tonight is simply to have a conversation to see if we want to continue pursuing. Then, I guess the way the timeline would look is next month, we would actually have a policy to look at, which would get tabled until the following one, right? So, are there any other, any questions?
I don't have time to look at that.
So.
Very closely.
Here's a question that I have. These, so these counties that are in green, right? These have stepped away from V S B A's standard policy to adopt something similar to what we, what we're reading today.
So, the model policy that we, actually brought.
I think you gave us some last time. Do we have any more?
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
Yeah. Thanks.
This model policy that we, in a way, places.
Sure, yeah, do you mind? Everybody can agree about it.
Yeah, I don't talk very loud sometimes, it's sort of like that.
Um, so the model policy language that you're looking at has actually been approved by the Tobacco Legal Consortium. We work really closely with them before we provide model policy language to divisions, because we don't want to put you all in an uncomfortable spot. Obviously, as Mrs. Grimsley has, you know, stated, that this isn't technically required by the state, but if we're going to partner with you, we want to make sure that we don't put you in a tricky spot. That is definitely not something we would ever want to do. So, yes, those divisions that are highlighted in green, some of them had updated their policies a little while ago. Um, this campaign has been around for a couple years now, since its fourth year coming on. So, a division like, let's say, Warren County, for example, that had V S B A language, they blended the V S B A language that is required with what we provide. Same thing with King George, Colonial Beach, Clark County, that just recently updated as well. So.
I see Clark and Warren and Page, as far as our neighbors go.
Yes.
Have made some changes. So it'd be good, while we're doing our research, to find out how they blended things, how close it is to what we're reading.
Yeah.
Sort of make a judgment.
Yeah, and some of the italicized language in there, too, has been added in other divisions, that just tries to make sure that, even if there are a little bit more questions, that everything is covered, because, like I said, we don't want to, we want to partner with you, we don't want to put you in any sort of uncomfortable position. I would feel terrible if that happened.
We will come find you.
Yeah. Well, I come here enough as it is, you'd probably be able to, so. I don't mind, I really don't, so.
All right, well, thank you all.
Of course.
So, are there any other questions?
I think it's, first of all, uh. If you approve the policy.
It is a, it is a, it definitely. I think they need to stop. We do. And so, so here's what I believe. So, uh, for example, the, so, young people go on a senior trip to New York, right? Falls under the current language in this model plan.
I'm more worried about the adults.
The adults on the trip to New York?
Promises are, I mean.
Well, adults at a, an away football game.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that today is, I don't think.
Those are the kinds of things you can't, you can't.
You can't enforce.
Enforce, I see. I think.
I mean, that would, so that's under the expression of the destination, right?
Well, it says that. It says that structure of your home, but there's that something nice in there. Way athletic, way athletic event.
Away activities.
Away activities.
Well, you know what? Here's what I think. I think we found out what in Warren County, or even Nasa's Park, I think was on the list.
Nasa City, not Nasa Park.
Nasa.
Yeah, I would think it would be there. I, I don't see how we.
I mean.
Who's gonna, you know?
Enforce it.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell on Wes, and then he's gonna get in trouble. I don't know.
Be more likely than me.
He'll tell on me. I, I, I don't want to make fun of it, but I, I do believe that, that we have to have a policy that is workable and doable. You know, I, I'm a longtime quitter of smoking, so I don't, in that ballgame, and I approve it for, for a number, and unfortunately, there's some people, a lot of people are still chewing and snipping, or whatever.
There's a whole nest here you can read.
Yeah, I know. But I, I'm not sure that I'm gonna ask somebody at the ballgame, you know, to get rid of their chute, or straw, or whatever you call it. That, that's the problem.
I, I remember reading in a ballgame, baseball game, saying, you know, you, you need to go do that in your car. So, 'cause I figured your own car was a place I couldn't tell them what not to do.
But now, that's not true.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I'll try to read it.
It stays on the parking lot. See, I, I, yeah.
Well, we can hold the surrounding divisions, and we'll see to what extent and how they blended it, and, you know, that's the distortion of the board on what, you know, what percent of it they want to be one hundred percent comprehensive, it would be the entire thing, but I think it's commendable that students are looking into this and wanting to.
Oh, I agree.
Effect policy.
It would be nicer for everybody if you've been able to act just a little bit.
That's true. Right, so we can look at that, and you can make a better decision based on what the surrounding divisions have done.
Appreciate that. So, when we come back next month, we'll see the results of that.
Great.
The focus will be on not only stricter, um. Guidelines, but also.
I think as important as the signage, I think the signage you showed is excellent. It's just a really good sign.
We also provide, has standard parent announcements, and also helps with their community and policy that you're talking about for folks who follow the rules.
Right. And then there's a place in here, I remember reading, that said that someone who is being disciplined is going to be referred for help, but I don't know where that referral's gonna go, or who's gonna do it.
That is also a good question. Do you want to, put that over there?
Yes, if you have.
Yeah, go ahead, you want to ask other questions?
I did some yoga this morning, so I'm feeling.
I mean, I, I think the referral and, or whatever help we can give people to get off the tobacco is the way to go, but I don't know who's gonna do that in the school system, who's gonna be responsible for it.
So that is a wonderful question. We get that asked quite a bit. Um, within the toolkit that we provide, there's actual sample resources, like quit hotlines and web resources. We don't require that, let's say, a school nurse has to give it out, because that, I feel like that'd be us overreaching, asking a school nurse to take on something that they're, they already have quite a bit to do. Um, so we mostly just ask that those resources are just available, so it's in the toolkit, they know where to find it. It's not saying, like, you're gonna be taking a nicotine patch or doing anything like that. It's more just that they can start that process to look, because a lot of folks do use web resources and phone numbers to kind of start that process too quick, so.
Your nicotine patch would be okay.
Yes, and there's actually a kind of like language in the model policy that includes, let's say, someone that's stolen from the property that has that patch, they would not need control.
Okay. That's how I stopped, so I, I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Nicotine patch is good.
All right. So that's, that's the direction I have, and we'll evaluate that next month. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, and then five point two, I was going to give you a quick update on back-to-school and the convocation. Of course, four of you were there, so you know how convocation went. Um, Commit to be Fit did sponsor our activities for the day, and lunch was generously provided by Henwater's. Uh, we had a great keynote speaker, who's an international talk show host, radio talk show host and bodybuilder, DeShawn Wright, who shared some insights about how being a better you can inspire those around you as well. Um, and he also provided concurrent sessions after that for weight training, which were very well attended. It's pretty great. And then Commit to be Fit put together some great breakout sessions about being healthy, and why being healthy role models for our children is important, and taking care of yourself and those around you is important, too, and extends into the learning. Um, prior to that, the week before, we also had professional development, including Wilson Language Training for primary teachers. Um, we had trauma-informed training, which was phenomenal, that was really helping teachers be aware of trauma situations that students may be going through, what the warning signs are those, and how you can respond to those situations. It was a great training. Uh, we had safety and active shooter training, what to do in emergency response. Um, and so all of those together to, to prepare us for the school year. So Monday, it was very heavy the week before, when teachers came back, we, we hit them with a lot of heavy priority-type things we had to address. Um, so Monday was really about taking care of everybody, coming back in, being energized, being motivated, and getting ready for back-to-school events. I think it was, it went really well, and we're hearing a lot of positives about that. We're ready. Everybody's ready for the job. Tonight went well, I saw lots of parents, my mom included, going to see all the teachers, meet the teacher night, and they're so, they're just so positive and ready, and the rooms look great, so, shoot, feeling good.
I enjoyed your kickoff. It was really insightful. That's really good.
And then five point three, we have recently revised our code of conduct, so I'm going to ask Ms. Carol Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent, to go over that process with you and where we ended up. She did a fantastic job with her committee.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Um, I realized after we sent out the PowerPoint for you to have to preview, that I hadn't sent you the actual revised code of conduct to have something to refer to, so I wanted you to have that for this evening. And if. The, um, the, the purpose of revising the code of conduct was to ensure, first of all, that we had a document that met the needs of the school division at this current time. The code of conduct that we had been using originated in the nineties, when it was first required by the, um, Virginia School Board, or the Virginia Board of Education. And we've made tweaks to it since then, but it's been a long time since it's had an overhaul of the whole document. So we wanted to be sure that now, twenty, thirty years later, that we were still addressing the issues that were prominent in our current time. So that was kind of the impetus for revising the code of conduct. Um, the purposes for the student code of conduct, of course, it is required through the Board of Education. Um, it's also intended to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the students. Of course, we want to maintain order, provide an appropriate environment for learning. We also want to help our students to have a good foundation for citizenship, which, even though it's listed as one of the reasons in here, that's probably one of the overarching reasons for a code of conduct. We also want to provide a consistent and equitable plan for dealing with student misconduct. We want to garner parent support in our disciplinary practices. And overall, by giving it out at the start of the school year, we're trying to prevent misbehaviors and, and different things from occurring throughout the course of the school year by getting that information out to the students and the parents upfront as to what is expected. Um, I did a little activity with the staff the other day. I had them write down the purposes of a student code of conduct. Um, and what I was trying to do was kind of see the different lens or worldview that each part of the school division brought to the code of conduct. It was especially interesting, at the high school level, I sorted out veteran teachers and new teachers, and had them, you know, write down what they thought the purpose of the code of conduct was. If you've been here for thirty years, you take a little bit of a different slant on a student code of conduct than you do if you're a beginning teacher. So, that lens through which we view is, is extremely important to consider. So, why was it revisited? Um, again, we said we wanted to be assured that we were addressing current needs of our students and faculty. It is required to be reviewed annually by our own school board policy. We wanted to address the issue of cell phones, which I'll go into in a little bit more detail. Um, we also wanted to reflect recent trends in positive behavioral interventions and supports, P B I S. We wanted to ensure inclusion of current practices that our principals and teachers may be utilizing, that maybe weren't necessarily spelled out in the previous code of conduct. One that comes to mind pretty quickly is the idea of confiscation. And since my early days as a teacher, if a student has something in school that they're not supposed to have, we confiscate it, but that wasn't specifically listed as a corrective action, so we wanted to add things like that. And then we also wanted to consider input from multiple stakeholders. So, we revised the code of conduct in three meetings over the course of this past summer with twelve stakeholders. Three meetings may not sound like a lot, however, if you're one of the team members who sat through three meetings that lasted at least two hours each working on this document on a beautiful summer day, it was, it was quite an intense process. Um, we used the Virginia Board of Education Model Guidelines, as well as examples from probably at least ten other school districts, from large districts like Fairfax, who had a code of conduct that was a couple of hundred pages long, to smaller districts. I think Clark County had one that was comparable in size to ours. So we reviewed other counties. Um, we looked at exhaustively at our current board policy and regulations to ensure that the two documents meshed. And then, um, finally, we had administrators review it to be sure that it was actually a document that could be used practically within the school building. So what's new, we hope that it is, um, more appealing and more reader-friendly. Parents and students are required to read through it at the beginning of each school year. I apologize, the copy that I gave you this evening is not the beautiful version of it. This is the black and white copy that we distributed throughout the division. We did send the, um, actual student document out to a printer. It's a colored document that hopefully is a little bit more appealing for parents and students to read. We, we kept the overall framework of the document, but we worked with the flow so that when we were talking about the responsibilities of the different parties, we began with the parents, and then we moved into the students. We moved into the school staff after that, trying to show that, that discipline and conduct starts in the home, and then from the home, the children are the ones who are responsible for it, and the teachers and the rest of the school staff are there to help to, to support them in that growth. We also moved to a leveled system of consequences, and if you'll flip to page nine in the example that I gave you, you can see the leveled system. Previously, we listed infractions on the left side, and then we would list, um, specific consequences over to the right, which a lot of times had a very broad range for corrective actions. And you'll also notice in the revised document, we don't call them consequences, we call them corrective actions, because we're trying to take a less punitive stance on what we're doing. We're here to help children to learn, not necessarily to punish them. So, on page nine, we have that leveled system of consequences, where we took all of the, what we would call the lower-level corrective actions, the mid-range corrective actions, and then the extreme corrective actions, putting them into a level one, two, and three. and then the extreme corrective actions, putting them into a Level 1, 2, and 3. We also added additions to the infraction section that were specifically stated in our school board regulation that never, I think maybe we had revised the regulation at one point, but it didn't necessarily translate to the new documents, so just a little, again, correlating between those two documents. We also added at the end of the document, two student complaint forms. I failed to, to talk about the 12 members that we actually had on our committee that worked on this document. We had, we had a very eclectic group. We tried to represent any possible population or stakeholder group that we could possibly think of. So one of those members was a student. And the student brought up the question, "Well, what if there is a situation, for instance, where a student is feeling harassed? What, what do I do about that? How do I let someone know?" So that's how we came up with the two forms at the end, for the bullying complaint form and the harassment form, so that students would readily have a document available to help them to know how they can report those actions. So that was another addition to the code. Also, we looked at page nine. If you would take a look at page number 12, for the tobacco infractions, we did add in the language that includes the electronic cigarettes and inhalant devices, hoping to target those lovely vape, vapes, let's just say that. Also on page 12, we separated out assault and battery as a separate category. In the previous document, assault and battery and fighting were all lumped together into one section, and we wanted to separate those out. Assault and battery is a higher level of, of a disciplinary issue that we would have to deal with for our students, so we wanted that to stand alone, along with the assault and battery and threat of staff members. Page 13, for attendance, we added language in there that came straight from our school board regulation, that the principal has the authority to notify the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court of Student Absences for potential suspension of students' driver's license. So for those students who are having issues with attendance, that may be one that they might get a little bit more motivated to attend school with. On page number 13, we added in bomb threats as a separate category. That was previously included with reckless endangerment, so we wanted that clearly standing out by itself. Page 13, we also have cell phones and personal electronic devices. So we had lengthy discussions about that. Cell phones have been a problem, and cell phones will continue to be a problem. And there was very little revision that we made to the cellphone section of the student code of conduct. The major change that we made in there is we talked about using those cell phones, or actually not using those cell phones during academic time. There are instances where teachers want the students to get the cell phones out so that they can participate in the class lesson with the cellphone, and we want teachers to have that option. However, we don't want students on their cell phones during academic time if it's not a part of the lesson. So that's where we were trying to get at. By saying it's during academic time, if the school allows the students to have their cell phones out during their lunch period, then that's up to the school, and the students are allowed to have it out during lunch. We wanted to be reasonable without being completely not understanding at all of the students' needs in this, because for some, it will be like losing an appendage when that cellphone is not able to be turned on during class time. The final reason we did very little with the cellphone piece of this is that we felt that overall, the, um, the code of conduct policy on this had not necessarily been consistent amongst all teachers and across schools in how it was being enforced. So we didn't feel good about saying something wasn't working if we hadn't actually tried to implement it the way that it had been written. So what we're moving forward with is consistency in, in addressing this issue. And then if it doesn't work, we can look at it, and we can change it so that it better suits our needs. But for now, those were the only changes to the cellphone policy. Page 14, we added in cyberbullying for obvious reasons. Page 15, harassment was broken out as a separate category. On page 15, we also added legal language to hazing, that notes it can be addressed as a Class 1 misdemeanor. Page 15, we also added laser pointers, which was something that was in our regulation. Pages 18 and 19, we put the bus rules and discipline procedures within the code of conduct itself to give, to lend more importance to those. And then lastly, the complaint forms. So that in a nutshell is, are the overall changes to the code of conduct. One of the things that really kind of jumped out during this process was the notion of zero tolerance and the punishment meeting the crime. And with the leveled consequence system in there, we felt like we had a wide range of potential corrective actions that we could use with our students. The notion of zero tolerance, I gave the example the other day, when I was a third-grade teacher, I had a little girl who told another student that she was going to kill them. Of course, this was 100 years ago, but still. So when the child said that, she was suspended from school for a week, and this was a third-grade child. So, you know, the message got across, obviously, that we weren't supposed to say that, but that was a pretty extreme punishment for a third-grade student. So this notion of zero tolerance, you know, are we, are we addressing behaviors in a realistic manner? And are we helping students to be able to apply these, these behavioral, apply these behaviors to the real world? The idea of students interacting socially with each other, talking face-to-face, when we go back to the cell phones, we have our children, and they are now in the habit of texting each other. They can say anything in the electronic world on a text, but they're not on the other end to see how the person receives it, or to see how that text is making another person feel. The real-life connection with other people is not always there for our students. And being able to develop a sense of empathy in how your behaviors are impacting others, are we providing tools for our students? So with that, we, we kind of got into the idea of emotional intelligence, of helping our students to become self-aware of their own emotions, how they can manage them, and also how they can practice social competence by being aware of the emotions of others and managing relationships with other people. Our strategic plan addresses the five Cs to help us to promote the profile of a Virginia graduate. And all of those stress critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration. What are we doing within our disciplinary instruction to help our students to develop those five Cs? So that led us into the ideas of restorative justice, and that was one of the corrective actions that we added to our leveled system of, or corrective actions. I'm still working on the language, too. Restorative justice, not about only managing behavior and having a classroom, so that when someone walks into it, they say, "Oh, what a well-behaved group of students." It's not just about managing the behavior, but building a culture that promotes relationships in which everyone respects the other person. Getting students to verbalize their problems. We want our students to come to the adults, to tell other children when something is wrong, and we have to be able to cultivate those relationships amongst our students and the trust that they can talk to others before they're going to come forward and tell us what the issues are. Helping students to take pride and ownership in their school community, and having a growth mindset, having the idea that, yeah, my behavior today may not have been so great, but I have the power within myself to be able to change that, because I have a school community that's going to help me to change my behavior. Giving our students a sense of empowerment and self-efficacy. So what's next? This is not a finished project. We are starting a conversation. We're trying to shift the focus from the code of conduct being a management technique to it being an instructional technique to help our students to be better people. We talked about utilizing strategies in class meetings during our pride periods. We have, we have people who are willing to lead a safe and orderly correlate team at each school to help us to be able to continue to address these issues, along with ideas such as peer mediation. I'm very excited that just this week, since some of our training has started, we have some of our teachers who completed the Eastern Mennonite University cohort recently, who actually were required to do some of this work in the peace-building, restorative justice. And once we threw that out there, we have a group of people who are so excited to try to get this started in our school system right now. So it's a good time for us to have visited this. It's also a good time for us to continue to work on this. And as we move to the concluding thoughts, we're here, we, we try hard to address the intellectual needs of our students. Commit to be Fit has been wonderful. It's helping us with the physical issues. We have addressed the social issues by so many of our clubs and activities. We're here to look at the child as a whole person, and we have to consider those emotional issues, but when they leave here, the idea of whether or not we have touched their heart is what's going to matter most to those children, and that's what they're going to remember after they leave our doors. So we're hopeful that by continuing to work on this process, we're going to continue a discipline team that will, will talk about these issues throughout the course of the year to determine, is this code of conduct working? Does it need to be tweaked? By continuing the conversation, we want to touch those hearts of our children. Thank you.
Great. Did the board have any questions?
A couple. I, I'm, I was, I'm crazy about acronyms. What does PBIS stand for?
Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports.
Glad you did PBIS. That's on slide number three. Say it one more time, positive?
Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And actually, if you go to the DOE website, this is quite a popular movement across the state right now.
I agree with it. I know what it was.
It stems from BTS. That's the Virginia.
I got it. I know what that one is. And then I, I did notice that there was some mention of class meetings or something of that nature. Can you go into that just a little bit? Because that takes a lot of training.
It, it, it depends on how involved you're going to get with it. The example that we saw the other day, as far as the class meetings, would be the talking circles, where if there is an issue that has come up within the class, say that we have peers who are being disrespectful to each other, the class is going to sit in a circle, the teacher is going to be the moderator, and we're going to talk about how that issue is impacting all of the students in the classroom, and what can we do as a classroom community to resolve that issue? So that's one example of what we can do.
That could be in just a math class or something. It wouldn't be school-wide, though.
That is correct. It could be a strategy used in any of our classes.
Has anybody ever given thought to doing class meetings on a, on an overall basis? Make you start, and do it that way, that, that if, uh, an issue is presented, and then through homerooms or whatever we have now, that, that is discussed?
Carol, if I could...
School-wide or, or whatever?
Absolutely. And part of the infrastructure that we have built into the instructional day will work really nice with this, because we started it years and years ago with the ODAIS program. So the class meeting structure is already kind of built into what, what we've been doing. And at the high school, the pride days and things, the way the flex period is, there's time. We have the structure to do it. This would be tweaking. So that, that's very, that's very good to implement some of these things. And then we're also looking at some of the peace-building, there's even curriculum we can get, and then Sandy Hook Promise stuff as well. Fits so nicely into the structure we have already set up because of those things we've been doing.
And we can do it in elementary school easily.
Absolutely. In elementary school, we have our class meetings, so...
And that's, yeah. I, I find that a wonderful vehicle, even to discuss code of conduct through class meetings. It's a, it's a great vehicle for that kind of thing. Anyway, just a thought.
Well done, Carol.
Very well done. Worked so hard. They were burning that midnight oil. I would leave the office, I'm like, "I love you all, but I'm not staying." It gets hot. They did great. The next point on the agenda, 5.4, is the SRO, School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding update. Now, what I put up here was the old one. So this is the current one we have in place, and it does originate from the sheriff's office. They, they produce the document that we sign off on. And then the, the second attachment was the proposed change to that. After Stacy and I looked at how we could provide a contracted service, because we do want to increase our SRO coverage at, at the schools, that was a very high need on our safety protocols. We, we figured out that this document will work for auditing purposes if we added just a little bit of language about the, the cost. So that would be that second attachment.
And the second attachment would be modifying which paragraph?
Second paragraph. So instead of saying the sheriff's office has assigned one deputy to SRO program, this time it's just saying, the sheriff's office has provided school resource officers to the SRO program, and they will have concurrent responsibilities. But then the piece about the contracted services that we would, our CPS agrees to provide compensation for one SRO in the amount equal to the daily rate of salary for the 180 days that school is in session. So the salary person, whatever person is filling that role, we would pick up the bill for the, the daily rate at the 180 days we're in session.
Is there any place in here where it says annual?
It is. At the end of the document, it says it's reviewed annually by both parties, yes.
I just, I just got this thing, so I haven't really...
It's, it's in the last page, under the conclusion, that it shall be reviewed annually and amended as necessary to meet the needs of the signatory agencies. So that is in there, yes.
When I originally talked to the sheriff, the conversation really was, we knew we could accomplish something together this year. Her concern was with perpetuity.
Oh, yeah, me, too.
And, and as, as was Mr. Welch. So I think what will happen over the coming years is we'll get together and figure out how perpetuity is going to happen, because, you know, law enforcement, it's, it's not our, it's not our thing. So...
So the annual is in the first copy?
It is, in the same document. We're not changing that language. It's in the conclusion section at the end of the document, and it says right there, the first bold part of Memorandum of Understanding, it shall be reviewed manually, the last sentence.
But there are no dollar amounts related to this?
No, because it, it really depends year to year on who's going to be assigned.
My, my point is that you could put a deputy in that's making a ton of money, and we'll have to pay that deputy salaries for a ton of money, as opposed to a younger deputy. Just saying lats a turnover, the same kind of thing. It's the same issue that you have with hiring teachers with 10 years' experience versus hiring a teacher with one-year experience. So we should have a limit somewhere, I think.
Well, it wouldn't exceed the 180-day amount.
No, that's not the point. 180 days of whose salary?
Correct, correct.
At what rate?
It's who she assigns and...
I mean, it could be at Chris's rate, which is way up there. Or it could be at somebody else's rate. I, I think we need to cover ourselves, because we have no control over who the sheriff appoints to this position.
Correct. And she is in conversations with us, very cognizant of that issue, and she also is, you know, looking at the, the benefit to, for sustainability as well. So, you know, the person who she assigns, I think that's going to be a factor as well.
Now, we were, we were going to try to track this with a line item?
Yes.
So we would be creating a line item to track it with anyway, so we won't have to assign a dollar figure.
That's, that would be my point.
And at that point, we would know, because she, she wants to know who...
But we should be doing the directing there. It should be our direction as to the dollar amount, I think.
I mean, if I was in her shoes, I'll, I'm not sure how we would know what the right number is. I think that needs to be part of the agreement. You're right. You're right. It needs to be part of this conversation and make sure, this year in particular, you know, since things are changing, this is why we should not be in this business. But since we are.
We shouldn't be.
Right.
This should be a county business.
Well, and we did base our estimate on, you know, just like we do when we hire a teacher, you kind of base it on step seven because you don't know where, where you're going to end up, and you do a cost for benefits at the family rate, and we add those in to get us a really close estimate on what it could be. But you are right, there's always those hiring anomalies that could push you over. So if we cap the amount, I'm not sure that she would have the, the amount either to make it beneficial either. So it's both of us working together to make sure we can accomplish what the goal is.
But I think as a board, we have a fiduciary responsibility to say what our limits are.
This year shall not exceed next stop. And so I would think we need to create that number. I'm not sure what it is at this point. We should have a conversation, figure out what's reasonable. This agreement is only between the sheriff and superintendent schools.
Right.
It's not something that.
The board of supervisors or the school board deals with. But I think as a school board, we.
Now that it has a fiduciary element, um, well.
I think that's, that's something two of them are going to have to work out.
They have to work it out and.
They can't do it tonight.
No, no.
No, not working that way.
We've known that.
But we're certainly running out of the number of days to work it out. So I think the guidance from the board would be to simply say, we need to put a not-to-exceed value on this thing for this fiscal year that's manageable by the school and agreeable with, with the sheriff. And let's just make sure we document the number as the line item that you were going to do. So I think with that, at least, at least you know what you have going.
Yes. And on another note with SRO, if I could mention too, I looked, Stacy and I were looking into increasing coverage at events as well because that's been brought up as a, as a safety priority as well. And there was an issue with payment for deputies who do come out, and this is why they're not all jumping up and down, if they're not going to get paid for six or eight weeks, you know? And I get that. So we worked out a way that we can maximize that time to no more than two weeks.
Oh, that's great.
So we worked out a, a way that we can do that with the sheriff's office and with our, our bookkeeping so that we can turn that time around. And I feel like if they know they're getting paid at most two weeks within that, that will.
That's reasonable.
That's a great accomplishment, actually.
Yeah.
We worked that out, so we've got that in place.
Well, that's really good news.
But yeah, that should just by indirectly impact our coverage that way, so we'll, we'll do a weekend.
Sure.
I guess they're getting paid, yes.
It could, it, it could go as many as five weeks without getting paid.
Even more sometimes.
Was it one, maybe eight weeks?
Oh, yeah, sometimes it's six months more.
Yeah, right.
Six at most if they were.
Well, I don't understand why that happened either.
We got it.
They got it. Very good. That's good.
All right. So on that, I, I guess you have sufficient guidance to look forward.
Thank you.
And you need, and we do need that agreement in place, so it's going to happen.
Yes. And she's already agreed to increase coverage for the start of school to make sure we've got what we need. Um, and she, and we are very open with this conversation, and we realize the mutual benefits of both sides working together to be sure we're not busting our budget either. It's a very nice collaborative relationship, so.
That's good.
And sometime before the next budget cycle chaos begins, we're going to have to have this meeting with key folks to make sure we know what the plan is from, from July.
Well, I think we, you know, at the joint board, board meeting, something we should probably, it might be late.
It's too late. So I'm thinking a preemptive discussion with county administrators, superintendent, Mr. Welch. So for two, you know, the, years ago, we'd have those, you know, two board members from here, two board members from here.
Do we ought to get back to that?
And just have a conversation about, all right, here's what we're all thinking. That was, it had its pros and cons. People thought there was.
Collusion.
Secret, now, secret collusion, there you go, the very collusion for all, for the same community. Anyway, uh, yeah, so we'll need to do that this fall.
Yeah.
Before we get into budget chaos. Next. Are we good? I think we're good. Thanks, Max.
Thank you. Okay. Next, on 5.5, I wanted to invite Jackie Lil Barton and Mandy Groh from Commit to Be Fit just to share their experience with accepting the, the SBA Food for Thought Award for, for their work on that grant and program. So Mandy and Jack, please come up.
All right. So, um, we, well, I guess Mandy and I worked collaboratively on the Food for Thought Competition for 2017. We had three opportunities to submit entries, and the first one was reducing childhood hunger, providing healthy school meals to students, and the third one was encouraging wellness and physical activity. Mandy and I both submitted, um, uh, something for the competition for, to provide healthy school meals and encourage wellness and physical activity. The one that I wrote was wellness and physical activity, and that is the one that won this year. And I just wanted to highlight, all we did was just answered five questions about, you know, just how you're incorporating the, the program. And really, it was really easy, of course, because it's a collaborative team effort, and we've kind of had everything laid out for us, and I just kind of had to highlight everything and organize it into thoughts. But the third question was, how is your school board involved with the project or program? And I just wanted to highlight you guys. So I said, Rappahannock County School Board has been instrumentally supportive of the Commit to be Fit program. From the beginning, space was provided in the school board office for the new employees of the Commit to be Fit program. The chairman of the school board has participated as one of the 150 members of the Commit to be Fit six-month challenge. The school board showed enthusiasm for the program using the components highlighted, such as their fit bits or activity levels. Through the board members' positions, they have promoted a positive influence throughout the community to encourage further support by the community members. Finally, the school board provided support and enthusiasm for each component of the program, ending the year by welcoming a presentation by the team. So that's what, kind of what we wanted to highlight. And so Shannon told us we won, and Mandy went and accepted it because for some reason, my husband did not want to cancel a trip to Florida just so I could accept an award in Richmond. So Mandy was able to handle it. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Um, so it was at the VSBA conference in Richmond. The governor and First Lady McAuliffe presented the awards, and as you know, First Lady Dorothy McAuliffe is a huge supporter of wellness in schools. So both of them together spoke very highly of all the schools that won. And it was, it was a really exciting honor to receive it on our behalf, so.
Are you, uh, 9,716, Jeff?
Yeah.
I just say, you know, this is, this is the, we're the winner for below 10,000 student population.
Right.
That's a lot of schools, isn't that?
Yeah. How many you have?
I've got 7,300. I've got a lot, I've got a lot of meeting reading today, though.
Oh, okay.
Over to you.
I moved a lot of hands.
Thank you all for that work.
What's the superintendent?
Uh, reported headquarters.
Of course. They greeted the new superintendent. We're looking forward to working with her. They just discussed the lunch, which happened yesterday. So no, we did the discussion, they provided it. And headquarters donated school supplies to the food pantry. They donated, donated 150 packs of note paper, 100 dozen pencils, and 100 pairs of scissors. And that is it. Lot of pencils.
And BTS?
No, we did not meet. I'm not sure when we meet again, do you? Have you heard anything?
September. September, I think.
It's in, yeah, it is September. We're not going to do one in August, hopefully. Okay, September. I've got the September date.
The SBA, the SBA conference. Seems to have, September 28th went to Charlottesville. That's the legislative one. And November, Weymouth. Last year, we only, we only had a couple of people go to Weymouth, right?
Three of us.
Three of us.
How quickly you're.
Well, I just can't remember. I remember there was a lot.
You went with your wife.
Trying to save money.
You went with your wife.
We're saving it this year, only two.
Is it just two of us going?
Well, look at, look at the price of it, too, that, just rich.
How much is it?
Oh, it's a little.
No, I would go. You don't need to go. You want to save another $200 unless you want to go.
Uh, we'll pop it.
All right. Who'll go?
Just let us know who you want us to work with.
Harvey? I'm going to go.
Okay. That's one of the tasks. Um, which one? Are you not going to go with the annual one?
No, I'm not going. You mean the, in Richmond? Is that what we're talking?
Charlottesville.
Charlottesville. Yes, Charlottesville.
Okay.
One in Richmond. We can go see our legislators any, any day.
Yeah, that's right. But, um, Williamsburg, are you going to go to Williamsburg?
I think you two are both.
We're the legislative people, or whatever they call them.
So I'm a maybe for November and not, I'm not going to make so. First you go in Charlottesville, and you go up to Charlottesville.
We're definitely going Charlottesville. Am I, I, why aren't you?
What's that? I don't think we have anybody going Charlottesville.
When is Charlottesville?
September 28th.
Yeah, 28th. 28th. I think I went to that last year. The Legislative Advocacy Conference is the one in Charlottesville for September 28th. That's that one day legislative advocacy. Nobody wants to go there?
It doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
Yeah. I've visited this numerous times. I just don't recall it being a good.
Well, I've, I've, if you're going to go to Richmond, you really don't need to do this. Richmond doesn't cost you anything. This costs $260 for the one day. And you get the same thing.
Well.
Uh, well, Richmond, you get, this is your, life is light on the night. You don't hear, you don't like.
I doubt it misses. All right.
They do have some good speakers with it.
All right. Moving on to public comments, may I like to address the board tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Rachel Bynum from the Piedmont District. And I just had a few, just from within this meeting, I just wanted to comment, make a couple of comments. I just really didn't expect to enjoy the code of conduct, the code of conduct I was presenting, but I really did. And I, and I love that approach of thinking about the whole child, and I just wanted to say that. And, and you were talking about class meetings and the fact that there are class meetings. I didn't know that as a parent of two kids at the elementary school. And I think it might be helpful to, to make sure that students who, I mean, I, we fill out all these forms as parents at the beginning of the year. I don't, I don't think I've read the code of conduct since, glancing over when my first grader entered, and I didn't realize there was a new code. And it might be neat, good for the students to realize that forms that are included be told in their homerooms or at whatever way. That's just a suggestion to carry this out as it should be. And then, so that was one observation. And then a second observation is with the, I'm proud of the Commit to be Fit. I think that's great. And I hear from talking to you earlier that you all have a classroom in school. Thinking of having, I have a fourth grader who was a third grader last year who was lucky to spend a lot of time in the courtyard, in the garden, and loved it. And I was just, as a, as a suggestion, it would be neat to include gardening as a fitness activity. And you, I think, speaking with Ms. Moore, she was feeling stretched with her new schedule this year, and it might be just a really neat way to get the kids working in a different way. I love gardening as a farmer myself, so I'm, so that, I just wanted to suggest that as another way to branch out. So, thanks.
Yeah, my mom always thought pulling weeds was exercise.
It is, but it actually is. Will you log it, like, into your phone? They don't pull up gardening. Oh, yeah. Heard a lot of haters.
Yes.
I'm really good at planting.
You know, Rachel mentioned something.
The weeding is not my deal.
And, uh, so I'm just going to share just a little, when we have a student, this is a sobering thing, but when we have a student that makes their way to be sitting in front of the school board in discipline, things have gone horribly wrong. And one thing I will ask a student is, are they aware of the guidance in the student code of conduct? Now, the problem is, they probably are fully aware of it after the fact. I'm not so sure that, that people are reviewing things like this for the students to say, let's just go over this. This might seem silly, but let's just go over these things. It's a good conversation, not one that you want to have apples. So I, I think it's a really good point, and I'm going to try to kind of get that out there.
Well, that was, that was my point in saying that class meeting or some formal way of presenting the code of conduct as a lesson is probably the best use of time the first day of school, first couple of days of school. To the point where I used to have a code of conduct lesson and then a test, and they got a free grade. It was an easy grade. All they had to do is listen, you know?
Giving away all his secrets. So.
But anyway, I, I, I think it's, I think your point is well-taken that kids, you know, I, I, I don't believe I ever read a code of conduct.
I don't know why I did.
Ever. And they, they gave us whole pack, you know? But whatever.
Very good point. Very good points.
How many have you read?
I'm not surprised.
I'm not either. Oh, my goodness.
I'm not surprised.
You're making A on the test.
She can teach a class.
Can teach a class, great.
Thanks. Anybody else tonight? Come to me, great. New business? Is there any new business this evening? No? Welcome to our new superintendent. Welcome. Good to have you seated here. Next school board meeting, I didn't look it up. September the 12th, right? September 12th, and returning to our normal schedule where we'll be here at 6 o'clock simply to open and go into closed session, show up at 6:30 if you want to action, right? If you want to see something. All right, at this time, we're going to recess long enough, we're going to come back into closed session. So after that, just so you're aware, after we go into closed session, we're going to come out of closed session, at which time we'll certify, there are no actions coming